We'll call our Pickens County Council Meeting to order for February the 4th. Thank you all so much for being here. It's always great to see a big crowd. We've kind of stacked the deck though because we've got some great visitors here. Appreciate you, all of you who take the time to come be a part of this as we do the business of the county. And I want to first turn it over to Councilman Trey Whitehurst for the invocation. That will be followed by Scout Troop 51 of Pickens for the Pledge of Allegiance and then our National Anthem from Haley Wilson from Southern Wesleyan University. So Councilman Whitehurst, if you'll start us off.
Y'all please stand. Dear Lord, we give you thanks today for being in this great country and given the opportunity to be in a country that we have the freedom to assemble and that we could do the governing of this country by election and not by fiat or by dictatorship. This is a great honor and a great blessing given to all of us. We thank you for that. We ask you, Lord, to watch over the troops and their families as they're out overseas and in America projecting us. Put a hedge protection over all the people that help serve and all the people here that are here to help us and doing the business in this county. We ask for your guidance and wisdom in everything we do. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you to Scout Troop 51 of Pickens and of course to Haley Wilson for singing our National Anthem from Southern Wesleyan University. We sure do appreciate you guys being here. We also want to thank the Sweet Potato Pie Kids for, I guess, kind of serenading us as folks were coming in between 6:00 and 6:25. We'll move to our second item of business. We'll now hold our public forum. Note, this is a forum for the public's opportunity to give back, feedback to council on issues that you deem important. We ask that, in the essence of time, you keep your comments to three minutes. And Madam Flor, will you please call our first speaker?
Mr. Chairman and members of council, I call John O'Leary. Our neighboring progressive county of Greenville has a situation. Drag Queen Story Hour has reserved a room in the tax-supported public library to read to underage children. They claim they are promoting tolerance and want to be positive role models to young children. How is promoting deviant behavior to impressionable minds a positive thing? I'm sure many people do not want their tax dollars being used to contribute to the delinquency of minors. I know you can't do anything about what goes on in Greenville, but you can do something about preventing this abomination from taking place here in Pickens. It will require changing the policy in place for reserving rooms at the library for private meetings. I don't know how legally it needs to be worded, as I'm not a lawyer, but surely our lawyer, Ken Roper, can help with this. Many say, "Live and let live. Why worry about what other people are doing to children? Just don't take your child to the library that day." The point is, this is just the stepping stone to get this deviant behavior lifestyle a means to be able to go into our public schools. They will claim they are promoting tolerance and diversity and are offering a role model that children should consider as a career. I kid you not, it's already happened. These drag queen story hours began in California and are now all over the country, confusing underage children. It's wrong. It's an abomination to God. You should go and visit the website, www.GreenvilleSisters.org, and their parent organization, Sisters.org, who are supporting this event. These deviants say they will be providing protection at the protests scheduled in Simpsonville by the Greenville Tea Party. They dress up as nuns. Their motto on their page says, "Go and send some more." Most of these drag queens who are reading to children perform on a regular basis at Club South 29 in Spartanburg and dance around like strippers to get dollar bills from the customers. And Lord only knows what else they do. They use their stage names on social media, so you can't run a criminal background check on them. These are not appropriate role models for young children, and frankly, any parent who takes their child to these events should be investigated by DSS. I beg you to please do anything you can do legally to prevent these drag queen story hours from happening in our public libraries and prevent them access to underage children in our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of council.
Moving on to item number three. Approving of our minutes. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes for the following meetings. January 14th for our regular council meeting, January 24th for the council work session retreat, January 28th for our special call meeting. Ask for a motion and a second on the approval of those minutes. Motion by Councilman Hudson. Second by Councilman Pinkster. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. On to item number four, administrative report. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I'd like to update council on the bids with Madden Bridge Project, Madden Bridge Park Project. Low bidder was Belt Construction with a bid of $214,814. The bids are within the scope of the approved budget. Pickens County staff along with Hultsey, Corncan Wallace Engineers have vetted the bidders, and we recommend moving forward with the low bidder for the project, which is Belt Construction. I placed a copy of all three bids at your desk there. Second, I'd like to ask council to consider adding a contractual item to executive session and update on the central rural fire contract. Third, we have Ms. Esther Wagner with Palmetto Pride in the audience with us tonight. She would like to address council and thank them for their support.
Hello, gentlemen. Last time I saw most of you, you were wearing orange vests on the side of the road. We appreciate the job that you do in addressing litter in South Carolina, and we wanted to tell you about a program that we have. Scott, this is Scott Morgan, our enforcement coordinator, also a member of the South Carolina State Guard. And like me, he has a very great heart for military, and so he thought of the idea of last year, from 4th of July through Veterans Day, we did the Palmetto Patriot Challenge. And we challenged everyone to pick up 21 miles of litter in their community in honor of our military. And you guys did it in one day. September the 21st, you managed to get quite a bit more than 21. So here is Scott to present you with an award.
As Esther said, I started a small business called The Rugged American Flag Company. It's recycled or reclaimed wood. And when I came up with the idea, I wanted people to get out and clean South Carolina up. And 21 is a significant number in the military, so that's the reason we chose 21 miles. And so I wanted to present this half-U.S., half-South Carolina flag to Pickens County for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for you tonight. We're glad to entertain any questions you may have.
Do y'all have any questions for Mr. Wilson?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number five. Consideration of a resolution congratulating the Young Appalachian Musicians or the Yams Program and its supporting organization preserving our Southern Appalachian music, or Possum, for its continued success as evidenced by their 10th anniversary event known as the Winter Bluegrass Jubilee. I ask for a motion and a second on this resolution. Motion by Councilman Hendrick. Second by Councilman Valdez. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. So I'd like to invite council and the board and Yams and who all is here to come on up. So this is a resolution congratulating the Young Appalachian Musicians, where Pickens County is the home of the Young Appalachian Musicians, the Yams Program, school of youth which provides musical construction and verges appreciation of the heritage of our traditional Southern Appalachian music. Whereas in the leadership of Director David Daniel, the Yams Program has grown to include over 300 third-to- eighth grade students enrolled in our program at twelve schools, sites in Pickens County. And whereas the Yams Program is supported by the preserving of Southern Appalachian music, Possum, whose vision is to create meaningful opportunities for people of all ages to participate and perpetuate the old-fashioned music, bluegrass music, and the traditions of Southern Appalachian. And whereas on January 26, 2019, the Pinkerton High School Possum held its tenth annual Central Bluegrass Jubilee, which featured performances by local musicians, Yams physicists, the Super Five, the Gens, the Stray Band, as well as alumni and friends of the Yams Program. Whereas Pickens County has recognized its continued success with students, along with the organizers of the Yams Program, Possum, and the New Bluegrass Jubilee, now therefore be its own, Pinkerton High Council, a recognition of outstanding achievement in the great times of our county, as well as recognition of sheer cultural and musical heritage that has hereby congratulated the Young Appalachian Musicians. Possum Organization has already spent annual vote of the Bluegrass Jubilee continuing to be cultural and back service for our community. Your resolution will focus to you. Get some pictures. I don't know how you can do a wide shot. I do want to say this. There's 300 students now. They asked me, "How many students have come to the program over the past 10 years?" And she said, "What do you wish to see them stay there?" A lot. And they literally did hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of kids that are exposed to this program that is absolutely phenomenal. So they had opportunities to come in a little bit earlier to hear some of the kids perform, the parts of the Pinkerton High Kids, and they got the honor of receiving the Big Pater, Big Pater Award. Something like that. Like that was, it's a very great award that really allows them to come to the program. But anyway, the county council recognizes Southern Appalachian music as being such a integral part of our heritage and our culture, and we are so thankful for being in the honor of directors and all of those kids. May I just hold on a second? Today's a fun day. It just is a fun day. Consideration of a resolution honoring Clemson University Fighting Tigers for winning the 2018 College Football National Championship. I ask for a motion and a second. Motion by Councilman Whitehurst. Second by Councilman Hudson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And that motion carries. At this time, I'd like to ask Thad Turnipseed, Director of Football Recruiting and External Affairs at Clemson, to please join us at the front.
... Right here. Moving on to the resolution. Whereas Clemson University has had its home with Pickens County, it is a great source of pride for county and citizens. Whereas throughout 2018, it has set up NCAA college football team and an ever-present example of capacity, competitiveness, and commitment to excellence and improvement by the Clemson University Tigers football team. And these qualities reflect the best of both the history and the spirit of Pickens County and every citizen. And whereas in the delight of puts itself on us and man as well as a citizen of Pickens County, the Tigers be the defending national champions, they are 44-16 to win the 2019 College Football Playoff. And whereas all the hardware of the football players, coaches, and staff recognize that Pickens County, the county wishes to congratulate the program on its perfect season, its third national football title, now therefore be its own, that Pickens County Council, a recognition of outstanding achievement, a product of the home county of the university as well as the state of South Carolina, and hereby congratulate the Clemson University Fighting Tigers as the 2018 NCAA football champions.
When y'all won the national championship two years ago, we had to break our own behavior of conscience and had to re-protect the people of the county. And the same holds true today that helps you about 10. It wasn't because you won the game, it's because of what you've done, part of your coaching, and all the players have. And I have to share this, the one thing I think most of all, is that when you watch the Tigers play, it's their playing, their play, and that's the play that happens in the game. Thank you, and please, they all said they wanted to be here to eat through the football game. For all our coaches, we never stop looking at each other. But they're in the order to deny any more, pretty much, I'm with the football team. But if you go to our, a lot of them have been there, you can't remember our staff from our model and our guy in front of us, the little love here serving, or serving player for our staff. And I want to say a last, thank you guys for what y'all did to serve and all that. A lot of them contribute, and I've been supporting the county, supporting the county. And at the beginning of 60 years, every thing I've ever done, Pickens County has been easy to deal with and great, and I'm grateful. Appreciate y'all serving us, and they're in and waiting for y'all. Thank you. Committee reports. The committee of the whole met in the main conference room at the administration building on Monday, January 28th at 6:00. You've got a written report in your packet. The first item addressed was log number 79, council rules. Council recommended staff rewriting the organizational rules to make suggested changes and bringing back for review. The next item was log number 66, road maintenance fees. Committee recommended to staff to work towards option D. We were presented with four different options, and we looked at what made the most sense to work with the municipalities on the intergovernmental agreement with the municipalities updating council with accounting on where they are spending the money and communication in bids to be able to save the county money. Staff will update council at the next committee of the whole meeting. And Mr. Wilson, did you want to comment on that one?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I met with administrators from all the municipalities on Thursday. Self, Mr. Roper, we sent you out a copy of an IGA today. All the municipalities are on board with the plan, option D, plan that council recommended, so it looks like we can move forward with that plan.
Is this something that we should convert on now, or do we...
Yes, actually, Kenson, it would be good if you did. The municipalities will send it there. Once you guys approve the IGA, you may want to take it home and read it on that. We sent it out this morning. But once you guys approve the IGA, the municipalities will take it back to their respective councils and have it approved as well.
One reading. Actually, tonight's reading would be really more for the other side of it, which would be temporary suspension of the minimum maintenance program. We'll have to come back to the actual final argument.
So what would be the motion to make?
To accept. This comes as a committee recommendation. What the committee recommendation says there, we should suspend the minimum maintenance program until... For option D, and then... Well, and then y'all are doing that, getting agreement by the municipalities, updating council. That's right. It's just adopting what you recommend. Okay, so as it comes as a recommendation from the committee of the whole, it does not require a second. I just want to explain, so basically, we're taking a hard look at the fees for the roads. And one of the challenges that we have, and this is kind of separate, but it was part of that discussion, one of the challenges that we have is with the $20 fee for vehicles, it really puts us on a 40-year plan for our roads, which is about 20 years too long. So we're still in the process of working on ideas and working through staff to solve that problem as efficiently as possible. In the meantime, they took, we took a look at the about 900 roads that are within the county, and rather than assign a number of cars to whatever area, we decided to, option D was basically assigning a dollar figure based on the total amount that we have for each road. The cities of the municipalities will be responsible for paving and maintenance of those roads within their city limits, and the county will be responsible for the rest. But we will also fund them their percentage based on that formula. Did I explain that well enough?
Can you percentage define that a little better?
The percentage. In other words, so if...
I can help, Mr. Chairman. If you own 2% of the roads, you get 2% of the funds that come in. If you own 10% of the roads, you get 10% of the funds.
Right. Yeah, if you own 10%, if 10% of the roads lie within the city limits, then they get 10% of the funding. That's what I'm saying. So that it just makes it more fair for the municipalities as well as for the county. And we can, that's one of the big things that we talked about in our budget work session is one of our top priorities is working towards solving this problem. All right, since, any other discussion on that?
One thing that I would like to mention is that the City of Clemson representatives who were at that meeting were really happy with this because it helps them to schedule things like sewer replacement, sewer line replacement, things like that.
And the other caveat you just made me think of is that we're going to try to work together with the municipalities so that we can get the lowest price possible when you're bidding out those projects. So it's not just one-offs here and there that we're kind of working together.
We've received a lot of positive feedback from all the municipalities, so they're very thankful, council taking time to listen to them on this issue.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification purposes, it's actually an afterthought I had. We talked about road miles and dividing about road miles.
Yes, sir.
For definition, are we really talking lane miles versus road miles?
We're actually talking road miles itself. Two-lane road is one mile of two-lane road, the same as one mile of one-lane road. We're talking about total length, that's what we're talking about. Most of your roads are, most of your county and municipal roads are two, are small two-lane, 14 to 16-foot roads. There's not a lot of variation in those. And all the municipalities felt that was the fairest way to do it because some's going to be a little wider, some's going to be a little narrower. They all kind of balance out in the end.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And that motion carries. The other item to report on was log number 95, request to accept roads into the minimum maintenance system. The committee recommended suspending any further approvals into the minimum maintenance program for staff to begin to work on language regarding that issue, the issue that we discussed. All right, the last item was log number 112, rear drive, and there was no action taken by the committee. This concludes our committee of the whole report for January 28th, 2019. On to item number eight, council correspondence. So I have a couple of things that I want to mention. I attended the GOP meeting. It was giving some information on the Step It Up Coalition. I've given that packet to Mr. Wilson, and we'd like for him to work with staff and the sheriff to get more details on that for council. Also got information that the South Line Association of Counties and some people from rural counties in the lower part of the state are going to be coming to visit Pickens to learn about our tradition arts music program here. Some of the places they'll be visiting are Holly Springs Center, Aunt Sue's, Table Rock State Park, Illinois Community Center, Hagan Mill. So it's a really cool thing where we're actually seeing people coming up, so I wanted to mention that. Also, I want to mention that February the 11th, we will have kind of a one-of-a-kind meeting for the first time that I've been told from the South Line Association of Counties. Reached out to Greenville County, Anderson County, Oconee County, and Pickens County to have a quarterly meeting, where the primary focus of these meetings will be to share visions, collaborate on future potential projects, to list ideas of working cohesively for our constituents, to discuss potential cross-promotion on each county brand, and to seek advice on potential challenges facing any one or all of our rural counties. And that'll take place February 11th, the first one here at noon in the boardroom. And then I think that's all the correspondence that I had. Anybody else have anything? All right. Moving on to item number nine. We'll now enter into our motion period and new business. Councilman Whitehurst.
I'd like to make a motion to accept bids for Madden Bridge Project. Since we did come in under budget and you've already vetted them out, we can go ahead and approve that and move forward immediately.
Second. Motion in a second on accepting. Do you have to vote to put it on the agenda before we vote on the, just one vote? Okay. Okay, thank you. Motion in a second, any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we add contractual issue for central fire to executive session.
A motion to add contractual issue on central fire. Second by Councilman Whitehurst. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. That motion carries.
And I'd like to make a motion that we add to the next agenda, approval of the Vineyard's Fire District Proposal, purchase a new fire truck.
All right, motion to add approval of Vineyard's...
Fire District Proposal.
Fire District Proposal.
Purchase a new truck. Purchase a new truck.
Fire truck.
I'll second that.
All right, a motion in a second, any discussion? This is on adding it to the agenda, not voting on it yet. All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, one, that motion does not carry. So that moves it to automatically to committee of the whole. All right, so that'll go on the consent agenda then. Okay. Is there any other new business? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item number 10. Consideration of resolution authorizing the devolution of all road maintenance responsibilities from Pickens County to Clemson University for a portion of Old Highway 28 per the university's request. Mr. Wilson, can you speak?
You can blow it up, you can already see that they have parking there, you can see the cars parked there. It is a county road, but they're using it, and I'm assuming for parking for the football games in Little John. There is no, is not going to affect any private property owners if that is given to Clemson University. And that was the old Highway 28 and when the lake was built, it was, I'm assuming it was given from the state to us. It was abandoned by the state, given to us.
So wait a minute, so that belongs to the county and they've been renting it, they've been renting it out for games?
That's what it looks like.
I honestly, you just don't know what a struggle it is sometimes to have to work with some of the people we love.
Well, okay, so the purpose of this would be so that you guys would take it over, maintain it, take care of it?
It's giving it to them so we don't have to maintain it anymore.
And it doesn't take us anywhere.
It doesn't benefit us in one bit.
Right now, it would have run under the dice.
But they've been renting it out.
They've been renting it out, they've been using it.
Without requesting use.
I'll have to bring that up next time we get a parking ticket.
Well, I wonder if we ought not sell it to them.
Now, I do have a serious question, Mr. Chairman. Under the plan that we discussed, we did talk about getting rid of the county roads and municipalities and allowing them to take care of it, would this fall under that?
Is that not the university?
Yeah.
It's a second. Would it fall to the city or fall to the university? So maybe we should be giving this to Clemson to get to them. I mean, can we?
Power that matters.
Is the university, Clemson University is one that's making the requests. Okay, so any other, actually, I need to ask for a motion in a second.
Well, actually, enforcement issues is going to be around gang time down there. Probably not a lot goes on right there during the COVID time. So I would say let them have it, and they have the enforcement, they own it, they have the enforcement part of it, they're probably already doing that anyway. And we don't have to maintain it, and it's, and really and truly, it's just a formality for them to have.
What is that, $40,000? How about a B?
I would say way less than that, maybe $250, $300 is very...
We don't have to maintain it, it's probably...
$20, $40, $50.
This is an odd dilemma. Okay, so we have the consideration of this resolution. Is there a motion in a second that we accept it? Motion by Councilman Hudson.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilman Feenster, further discussion? No further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed? All right, item, thank you very much, sorry, we didn't mean to goof on you too much. Okay. Item number 11. First reading entitled only of an ordinance declaring certain lots within the Quail Haven subdivision as surplus, placing thereon restrictive covenants and authorizing the conveyance of said lots and matters related thereto. Ask for a motion in a second to constitute first reading entitled only.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Whitehurst.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bowers, any discussion?
What's these go into surplus, are these being put up for auction? Can we, do we have to go through a procedure to do that, or can we just kind of make that part of this whole? Do we need to reword our ordinance and somehow do that? Because I just want to go ahead, it's property that's sitting there, that's not on the tax rolls, if no one can develop, it's just...
So once y'all walk around and declare it to be surplus, once it's actually part of the first, whatever that is, it could...
Don't we have to auction it?
Well, we don't necessarily have to auction, but I'm assuming that's the way it's just going to be done. Once that happens, then we'll have to have a rereread of the vote period to actually make it through. That's going to have to happen after the other...
So can we make this read in such a way that it automatically goes to auction?
If you say that you want this to be first reading, I don't want to get in the way of do it, because obviously I want them to make that term there. But you could make it first reading kind of way before this is...
Right, 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 okay.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, as it is, is fine, because it's just a first reading and then we can adjust it. Can you go look that up and see how to add something in second reading that can make it?
Absolutely.
That's all.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Item number 12. This is public hearing and third reading of an ordinance to amend Article III and Article IV of the Pickens County Code of Ordinance related to multifamily dwellings per the planning commission's recommendations. So I will go ahead and gavel this into public hearing. Does anyone have anything that they want to say about our third, third reading of the ordinance to amend Article III and Article IV of the Pickens County Code of Ordinance related to multifamily dwellings? Seeing none, I will call our public hearing closed. Ask for a motion in a second to constitute third reading of ordinance number 562. Motion by Councilman Feenster. Second by Councilman Bowers, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. That motion carries. Item number 13. Consideration of funding request for special election, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Chairman, we have Director Rodney Allen with us tonight. Rodney, would you mind stepping to the podium and go over your request?
Thank you, members of council. I just come forward today to ask that you fund the special election. I don't know if you have the itemization of what this entails, but basically, the special election comes out to approximately $8,233.50. Sir? Plus the ballot boxes.
So what's the total cost?
The total... The total cost altogether comes out to $10,068.85.
What are these ballot boxes?
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
What are these ballot boxes?
Currently, we use very small ballot boxes. They're not really designed to handle the larger ballots that we use. And so when we had a situation that required their use as emergency ballots on election day, it didn't work as intended. The new ballots would be professional-sized, larger-sized ballot boxes that would allow us to accommodate the larger ballots that we use.
Where do you get those from, the new ballot boxes?
They come from a vendor. In today's digital age, there's only a few companies out there that make ballot boxes. Specifically, these ballot boxes come from Inclusion Solutions.
Any...
Yeah.
Yeah, here you can.
I'll tell you, I'm very unhappy with this whole situation. This affects my district. I've caused a lot of grief over this thing. We met with you during the primaries, and we asked you to make sure that we didn't have another problem like we had in the primaries. And in this election, we had worse problems. My opinion was because it was no preparation done before. And it's going to cost taxpayers now $10,000, and we don't have a choice. But if I had a choice, I can promise you, you wouldn't like me being your boss. This was unnecessary. It should have been some preparation done before, and this should have been checked. You don't start on election morning, just so you know. But I didn't like the way it went during the primaries either. And, you know, I'm not your boss, better be glad I'm not.
This will not happen again. The circumstances we encountered on election day are not going to be repeated, that I can tell you.
But you said that during the primary too.
As I'm saying, and I can stand here before you today, the circumstances that we encountered on the general election will not be repeated again. Every item will be tested and retested.
I want to interrupt real quick before we go too far down this road. I'd like to ask for a motion in a second so that we can discuss and link if we need to. Motion by Councilman Whitehurst. Second by Councilman Hudson, all those are now open for discussion. Sorry.
Mr. Administrator, does Mr. Allen have the $10,068 he's requesting in his budget?
Presently, I had Mr. Greenough look into his budget. There is not funds in his budget presently, over the cost.
There is not?
No, not unless we do something special in the department, I'm not sure what.
Are there options, what are the options?
One of the options that was asked to look at is possibly furloughing employees. We had a look at that, that comes back down to a, I guess it's, Director Allen works for the State Elections Commission, he would have to tell us what the department needs to run and operate. I'm not sure what that would be, but that's one of the things that was asked to look at.
Are there anybody here on the State Election Board? Or the County Voter Board? Those are the, that's who you, that's who you are responsible to, correct?
That's correct, I report to my board.
And what was there to say in this matter?
Again, I'm not authorized to speak on my board, but I can say we, no one was, no one was pleased with the circumstances that transpired.
You understand our dilemma?
Yes, sir.
This is the second time that it was worse than the first. I came by several times before the election and said everything good. And you said it was.
Yes, sir.
We requested someone from the state to come down to monitor the election. Are you aware of that?
No, sir.
We have sent a letter asking them to send someone down here, they've only given us somebody for the day. I wanted someone to come down to work with you beforehand, make sure, because I don't want to be Broward County of South Carolina. And I feel certainly for Councilman Hudson here, his district, there's no excuse. We got no choice, as you've told us, to pay for the election.
Mr. Wilson, do we have the authority to ask for furlough or whatever? How does that work?
Our obligation under state law is to...
If you choose not to fund the election under state law, what's the repercussion to face?
The repercussion that I'm aware of is if the government fund allocation to us could be devoted same amount plus tuition.
Will these even more?
A question, may I?
Yes.
We use county employees to help in the staffing of this. Are we obligated to do that?
We are, the funding, the funding that you're mandated to provide in state law, it doesn't say that we have to volunteer employees to do that. And we traditionally do that, we did this one, this one.
And if it weren't for your quick response, it could have been a lot worse than it was. But we do have that option to not use county employees, but the board, because that is ultimately their job, is to run the election, we just giving the money. Is that not true? So that it is possible as an option. Probably not the short of notice on this situation, but we could.
I understand where you're coming from, Trey, but this is my real fear about the whole thing. It's nothing against you, Rodney. It's, we have so much other apathy now. These things, it's just very important that they go right because I'm going to tell you, after this election, in my opinion, I've talked to both sides, there's probably nobody going to be happy with this. When it's all said and done, whoever wins, they're not going to be happy they had to run again, and the other one's not going to be happy also.
It's a tainted seat, right on.
It's just, it's that way, and we can't go back and do it over. That's why it's so important, that's why during the primaries, we talked to you, because it is so important, your job, if you get people where they are any more apathetic about voting, I mean, you got about, what, 15, 20% now? Folks have got to have confidence, and when they go to that polling place, their vote's going to be counted. And it's bad now, we can't let it get worse. It's got to be right.
People aren't going to vote if they don't believe that their vote counts.
And that's right now, 3,500 people voted, I think, in this, in this election. We'll be lucky to get 400, 500. So who knows if this is, if this is going to reflect the wishes of the 3,500? And that's the problem, and that's, it's not, not anybody criticizing you, but your job is important. Your job is bound because of this confidence of the public.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the consideration of the funding request for the special election in the amount of $10,068.58? in the amount of $10,068.58, signify by raising your hand. Opposed? All right, thank you. Item number 14 on the consent agenda, we need to add the Vineyard's Fire District and the results from there. Automatically goes, okay, thank you. I want to make sure. Is there anything, no, we'll save it. Motion to approve all our consent agenda, which was just a speed bump for we're going to... Motion to approve, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. All right, item number 15, executive session, so... They come here. All right. We need a motion in a second that we enter into executive session based on the following items. What's the item that was added? The Central Fire District, the Kiwi Springs Fire Department Rescue Personnel Issue Corner, Legal Update, Project Providence under Economic Development and under Boards and Commissions, ATAX, Alcohol and Drug Behavioral Health, ACOG, Assessments and Appeals, Beautification Committee Bethlehem, Brolin Oak Water, Construction Board of Appeals, Cultural Commission, Easely, Central Water, Economic Development Alliance, Fire District Awards for Central, Crosswell, Bangasville, Easely, Holly Springs, Liberty, Pickens, Pumpkin Town, Rocky Bottom, Shady Grove, Six Mile Vineyards, GPATS, Library Board of Directors, Pickens County Grievance Committee, Pickens, Oconee, Anderson, Mental Health, Planning Commission, Public Service Commission, Sedgwood, Tax District, Six Mile Water, Rural Water, South Side Rural Water, Water Authority, Tourism Board, Zoning and Appeals, and the nonprofit for Haygood Mill, Pickens County Museum, and Pickens County Performing Arts. Ask for a motion in a second, we entering for those reasons. Motion by Councilman Bowers, second by Councilman Thiemster. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And we are going into executive after a brief recess. Thank you all very much. In lieu of an agreement of tax and incentive agreement by and between Pickens County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county at this time as Project Providence, acting for itself, one or more subsidiaries, affiliates, successors, assigns lessors or other project sponsors pursuant to which the county show covenant to accept certain negotiated payments in lieu of ad lorm taxes with respect to certain facilities in the county, the benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the company and the project and other matters relating thereto. I ask for a first, a motion in a second.
So move.
But Councilman Bowers, second, Councilman Thiemster, I think was first on that. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. I make a motion that we appoint Gene Bryant and Marjorie Schaefer to the museum board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bowers, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And motion carries. Onto our final action item for the evening.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Bowers.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hudson, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. And motion carries. We are, sorry.